All right, it's 6:30. We'll call this meeting to order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
I do not have any.
Okay, seeing none, I just need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. All right, that opens us up to public comment. Seeing that there's nobody here, we'll close public comment. Consent agenda. Anybody would like to make a motion for the consent agenda?
I'll move that.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. I would just like to thank justin firefighter Justin Haskel for his service on the department. So, thank you. We do have, we thought we were gonna have Jim Nash here. He's not here at the moment, so we'll just move on. And if he does show up, we will come back to that. All right, so let's move to seven A1, the bond sale of the 2021 Street Project.
All right, mayor and council in front of you is, as in a separate attachment, is a bond sale report. For the 2021 Street Project, we did receive the updated version of that this morning. As we did our bond sale this morning at 10 o'clock. Todd Hagan with Ellers is on the, on the line as well to go through that, that bond sale report. And then after that report, staff is proposing Resolution four dash twenty-six dash twenty-one dash eighteen, awarding the sale of general obligation improvement bonds, series 2021B, and levying for the payment thereof. So Todd, I will let you go through, go through that report.
Great, thank you Maggie, council members. Todd Hagan from Ellers, I'll go through the report. So as Maggie said, we did receive bids up to 10 o'clock this morning on the 2021 Street Reconstruction Project. If you remember, there's cash from the water sewer and street funds that are going into this too. So nine hundred thirty thousand is, is, is less than, is less, obviously less, a lot less than what the project calls for. But your financial management plan and Steve McDonald from ABDO and Maggie had, showed some cash that you could use to put towards this bond issue. So it's a smaller bond issue, went out fifteen years or so. So we did attract a couple bids. So Northland Securities out of Minneapolis and DA Davidson, I suppose you could call that two, went in and they had the lowest bid at 1.44 percent. And that was about eighteen basis points or point eight, one eight percent less than our, our pre-sale report showed. And then the second bid was Collier Securities out of Minneapolis at 1.66. That would've worked fine too. I think that's sort of what we had it modeled at anyway. So, so came in less and with very little premium. Yeah, I know you're used to premium on the fire hall and so we didn't really get any of that extra money. This time, the rate pretty much matched the re-offering yield to the customers. And so kind of a non-event there. So it was more of a traditional competitive bid on, as far as that's concerned. So we kept the amount at nine hundred thirty thousand this time. It's cost of issuance and other, other costs kind of came in a little less. But we'll just put that into the project fund and you should be off to the races here. So this did also qualify for that state guarantee credit enhancement, we call it, at the triple A level. The standard poor's triple A. And you did maintain your double A stable outlook. So I had Maggie on the phone a couple weeks ago with Steve and the team here and just basically updated standard impores with the new audit you had. And, and you just really talked to him in January anyway. So it was just an update of what we talked about for the fire hall financing. And then they did note that although your transfers out were as expected, you did have slightly better surplus than the last time we talked. So keep up the good work on, on that as well. So I do have the latest standard impores credit rating report attached, as well as the final bond numbers and the bid tabulation and the graph of the thirty-year bond buyer index showing we're at a historic low interest flow rates like we were for the fire hall. So that's wonderful. This bond will close on May thirteenth, get all the money wired to you at that time. And, and I think that's it. Meg had talked about the resolution that you'd consider tonight if you want to go forward with this. And that's all I have got and appreciate the business again. And there's not too much, not too many bonds being sold today. So it was a little quieter day and attracted a couple bids. And then that one went, DA Davidson went in with the winning bid. So they sharpen their pencils for you today. So appreciate that again. Any questions from the council or staff?
I just have, this is Nikki, I have a question. So it says the bond amount's nine thirty, but then on the bid tabulation, why does the price say nine eighteen?
Yeah, between nine eighteen and nine thirty is the, is the fee that the underwriter took a little north of $12,000 to remarket the bonds?
Oh, okay.
Yep, good question.
That's all the questions I have. Anybody else have any questions? All right, well then I'm gonna make a motion that we accept the low bidder, Northland Securities DA Davidson, at nine hundred and thirty K, 1.44 percent interest for Resolution four dash twenty-six dash twenty-one dash, dash eighteen.
I'll second.
I need a first first.
Oh, I thought you made the motion, you said.
Oh, well, someone make the motion. Cause I don't think I can make the motion. Sorry, that's.
Okay, yeah.
I'm not sure. Can I make the motion?
Yeah.
Okay, well then I'll make the motion. Okay.
I'll second.
Any, any further discussion?
I guess I have a question on page forty-six. It said, see attached schedule in exhibit B.
Yeah, so it is actually in this report. It was not available at the time the packet went out because sale was this morning. So.
That's as well as exhibit A two is in here somewhere?
Oh, actually, yeah. So exhibit A is the bid tabulation. And then exhibit B, oh, I can, and I can provide you with a copy of it too. I, the, the updated resolution was provided to me this afternoon. But essentially, the exhibits are what's presented in this bond sale report. And I can get you a copy of that.
And we still don't know what the assessments will be for the twenty-three properties or?
We do not. So we only, so the final, so what we do know is the final numbers that the project is coming in at. We will not know the final assessments until we have the public hearing and educational sessions in the fall. So we're gonna see what the final project cost is at that time. And then council and we'll hold a public hearing with the residents and we'll determine what those assessments will be then.
So as of right now, it would be based on the nine hundred and thirty thousand, correct?
No, no, it's actually based, here, let me go to my report.
We're off the one point.
It'll be the one point two, two six. So if you go into my report, it kind of breaks down that the construction portion came in at nine hundred fifty-nine thousand seven hundred thirty. And the entire project is expected to be about one million two hundred fifty. That was, that's down from the projected one million four hundred eighty-six. So we do know that it did go down significantly. And then it shows that the city's portion was lower to, per policy, assessment policy, seven hundred eighty-six thousand. And the assessed portion went down to four hundred sixty-three thousand about. They, and that's down from the feasibility report that we passed in December of, of. So that's down from the five hundred ninety-four.
Got it.
Yep. But yep, again, we don't know what the breakdown is yet because we haven't decided, the council hasn't decided the assessments yet. We don't know the, the exact final cost of the project. So we will be going through that process later.
Okey dokey.
All right. We'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes three zero.
All right, thank you again. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Todd.
Bye bye.
Okay, we're gonna move on to seven A two, the smart water controller program agreement.
All right. So council in front of you tonight is a motion to approve Resolution four dash twenty-six dash twenty-one dash nineteen that references and approves the agreement between the city of mayor and Carver County Water Management for the smart irrigation program. So in your packet is a resolution that approves the contract that is also in your packet that outlines the responsibilities of both Carver County Water Management and the city of mayor as it relates to the smart irrigation program that we've talked about in, at previous council workshops and meetings. As you know, it's, it's a program that aims to conserve groundwater resources and it allows residents to participate in this program and get reduced cost smart irrigation meter or controllers for their irrigation systems. So just a remind, just a reminder that Carver County Water Management, it has their own contract with Ratchio. It's a, a company that supplies the smart irrigation program. So everybody will have their, their separate responsibilities. Our contract is just with Carver County, Carver County Water Management. So the last time we talked about this, we did have the contract in the packet for review. There was no comment in, at that time from council. We just needed to come up with anything that the city council would like to put towards that program as far as reducing the cost of the controllers a little bit further. At that meeting, it was decided that the city would put a thousand dollars towards the program. So it'd be twenty dollars for the first fifty controllers purchased. And then we did make a motion to, to contribute five hundred dollars towards the startup of the program. But Carver County has not, has let us know that they will not be passing any of those costs on to us. And so that is not included in the contract. The only thing that's included is the a thousand dollar allocation. So that, so that's reflected again in the contract. And then, but that doesn't bind us if we do go through the, through the, that thousand dollars relatively quickly. We can always pass another amount if we feel that we want to keep pushing this, this program to residents and make it an incentive. So with that, staff is recommending approving the agreement by passing Resolution four dash twenty-six dash twenty-one dash nineteen. But before that, I will take any questions on the contract or any other questions on the, on whose responsibilities are what. And yeah, go from there.
So our total investment's gonna be the fifteen hundred, the five hundred and the thousand?
Ours is actually the a thousand. So we had originally budgeted fifteen hundred. Did I, did I accidentally keep it in there? But Carver County came back and said that they would not charge us the five hundred, that they would cover that setup fee.
That's good news.
Yeah, it is. I think it's a good idea and if the program takes off, even if it saves water on five houses, we're making headway.
And then how are we gonna get this information to residents?
Um, yeah, so the city will be responsible for the marketing. And so Ratchio will provide, and the county will provide marketing materials. We were thinking newsletter, social media, and then the website. So we would essentially have more information on the website and try and summarize in the newsletter and on social media and link to the website.
We could also do what's called an EDDM mailing, which would be relatively inexpensive. And we could cover strictly the housing developments with water irrigation systems. We could probably cover those two particular areas for two hundred dollars.
What is it called?
Called an EDDM mailing. It would be through Bruce Johnson and the Herald Journal.
Okay.
Just something to think about. A lot of people use them. The restaurants did during COVID, put out their menu and coupons and stuff. It's relatively inexpensive. You can do double sided and up to an eight and a half by eleven sheet for pennies. Just a thought, if we wanted to put it out there, especially, you know, Fieldstone, you know, Coldwater Hidden. Those are the places with the irrigation old mayor had. We could directly target them.
So would someone like to make a motion for Resolution four dash twenty-six dash twenty-one dash nineteen?
I'll move that.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes three zero. Yeah, let's just make sure we highlight the, we're doing twenty dollars off per.
Yep, we're, so the program already comes with eighty dollars off. We're doing an additional twenty. So the residents will get a total of a hundred deducted from the market price of the controller.
All right, we're gonna move on to seven B one, Fire Department Training Area Project.
All right, one second. All right, so council in front of you this evening is related to the mayor fire department training area. So staff is asking to, you to review the concept plan and consider approving to move forward with the training area. This was presented at a previous council meeting where the concept plan was presented by the fire chief. Chief Metzold is here this evening to answer any questions. The training site would include three dry freight containers. So two of them, we do not have on site yet. We would be getting those from the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources. The city would pay, would have to pay one thou, about one thousand eight hundred total in shipping fees to get them delivered to the site. These newer refurbished boxes are usually between forty-five hundred and six thousand dollars. So to get two of them shipped to the site for eighteen hundred is, is pretty good. The department would use them to create a training space or facility. I did include information in your packet on that. Kind of how other departments have been using these. They're really durable, weather resistant steel. And so they're built to withstand harsh conditions, including fires. So they're a good opportunity to simulate real life fire situations and help firefighters learn techniques. So in your packet is the location that this is being proposed. The city planner did review the location and the concept and stated that it would be allowed if it is fenced in. So therefore, the project would require fencing. Since the last meeting, we did get a fencing estimate for the training area. The training area would also include millings. We do not have to pay for the millings because the public works department has leftover millings from different city projects. So that would be free. So the fencing portion of the project would be a hundred and ninety-two feet of six-foot chain link fencing. Staff is proposing a twenty-foot gate that would open. We did quote it two ten-foot swing gates as well, but we think that the twenty-foot gate would work better.
Twenty-foot rolling?
Roll, uh, swing gate, sorry.
It's a swing gate?
Oh, I'm sorry. Rolling gate, I'm sorry.
That's a long span to beat.
That would be. Installation will be completed by the fence company, Century Fence. So what we're looking at financially is eighteen hundred for the storage container delivery. We would not pay anything for the ground surface covering with rock millings. The fence with one twenty-foot rolling gate would be fourteen thousand seven hundred fifty-five for a total project cost of sixteen thousand five hundred fifty-five. And staff is proposing that that come out of the fire capital fund. I do have a balance there of the capital fund right now that is currently on the total. And then the unreserved amount is at four hundred thirty, about four hundred thirty thousand. So with that, the city administrator and fire chief are recommending approving the fencing with the one twenty-foot gate for fourteen thousand seven hundred fifty-five and the storage container delivery fee for eighteen hundred for a total project cost of sixteen thousand five hundred fifty-five to be paid for out of the fire capital fund. And again, I'm available for questions and so is Chief Metzold.
Great idea. Maggie, I'm stuck on the fencing again. The, the sixty-seven foot run.
Okay.
The difference between, what's the difference, the, the width between the city fence on the public works?
That fence is not on the property line. So the public works fence is probably five feet off the property line. So public works would have to move their fence to the property line and then in order to tie in. And that is why this is a separate fence entirely.
What's the difference between it?
Between, oh, between.
It's between. How much, how much distance is between the two? The alleyway would be what width?
I'm making the, I would have to look at that. I'm thinking it's, would probably be eight to ten feet gap.
It would depend on if we put ours on the property line or we kept it off. Right now, the city's like five feet off, I think, the property line. So you'd probably hold it back a little bit so that there either is decent enough room in between them to mow and stuff like that.
Even though both properties are owned by one entity, you can't go up to that property?
You can, you need to be on the property line to be able to tie in because they're separate properties. If we ever sold that property, just hypothetically, then we would run into issues. So we have to do our city code the same as any other property. And in order to tie in, they both need to be on the property line if they want to share a common fence. So if we were to do that, we would have to move the public works fence to the property line in order for the fire department to tie into that fence.
Would that be beneficial?
Um, my recommendation is that if we, I, I guess it depends on what the council wants to do. It would cost extra money to do that. My recommendation is that if you move that section of the fence, you have to do, you should do the entire section of the fence on that property line, just because it would, essentially it would just jet out and then go back to the five foot in.
In the long term, I mean, the, the best usage and the greatest good amount of land you could use, rather than have a five-foot alley that nobody could use. Public Works would either get more space or the fire department would give more space if we could work that out, rather than it just sit there.
Yeah, it's something we can look into. We can get pricing on. The, the reason why we did it this way is to move forward with the project and the least cost. Just to keep costs down, but, and not, again, it's not something that the public works depart. We would have to figure out who would pay for it essentially as well, because it does cost money to, to shift a fence. I did talk with public works. They are fine with maintaining it either way. But if you want to move forward with the direction of getting pricing on shifting the entire fence over, we can, we can do that as well and come back with this.
Well, I don't want to hold up getting the storage buildings though. I mean, I want to get those in.
Um, I mean, this, this project is, I, is not something that's gonna be completed anytime soon. Because obviously, we have the fire station being built right now. I guess what?
We just make a motion and just see where we, where we end up. And I mean, my thought was, I kind of like the idea of keeping them separate. Not to say, I mean, we're, we wouldn't sell the fire station lot because that building is fire station and built for a fire station. But the public works building, if we decided that it was better to the public works area, because it used to be up here. And then we purchased this lot just because we needed more space. What if we're growing and we decide we need to be out by the wastewater treatment plant? Then we're not messing with fence lines and stuff later to try to sell it.
Right.
And just kind of, and we're following our own ordinances. That's where I'm kind of at, that could it save you like five thousand dollars? Because you have the cost of adding additional fence and then moving it.
Right. Well, we could also put fire stations on the property line. And if we decide later, because we can make this motion now, make this happen. And then we can move the public work fence later also in a separate, you know, if we see fit. Right?
That is, that's true. You can extend the fence to the property line. Essentially, because you own the other property and then at a later date.
Then we could just redo that one section of public works.
Right, we could bring it back to see if that gets shifted.
If, if we deemed it, you know, necessary.
Yep.
So we can either table it for later or we can, if someone wants to make a motion to move forward with.
I'll make a motion to move forward with the project of the fire department training area.
All right, I'll second that. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Meg, I just wanted to get more information on the, on the fencing. I just, it just doesn't seem logical to have two properties owned by the same entity with the five-foot alley between them. But that's just my thing.
No, it's fine. All right, motion passes two one.
So I just want to get clarification. So you're, we're passing it as is?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right, B two, pager purchase?
All right, so again, myself or Chief Metzold can answer any questions with this. And it's, council action is to approve the purchase of pagers for the fire department. In your packet is some information about why we need to purchase new pagers. We work with Carver County Sheriff's Department Communication Service Division for Emergency Dispatch. Just the, the quick summary is that in. Um, just the, the, uh, quick summary is that in, uh, Carver County is, um, going to drop one of its systems as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. That's the current system that our pages, pagers, uh, connect to. And so they are going to a simulcast system, um, after that time. And so we need to upgrade our, to new pagers that will connect into that system. Um, so that system will be an eight hundred megahertz system, and then there will be a backup system as well. So we are looking to purchase dual pagers that have the capacity to, uh, receive signal from the, from that new system, the eight hundred megahertz system. And then the county's backup VHF system. Um, so again, currently our current pagers do not, um, would not be able to, uh, receive that signal after December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. So that's why we need new pagers. Um, so the fire department has received ten pagers from Camden Township, um, in April of this year. So, uh, the fire department is looking to purchase twenty-two more pagers from Ancom Communications. Um, to have a total of thirty-two pagers to cover the current roster of thirty members and two extra for backup. Um, so therefore, the purchase, uh, for financial, the purchase would be, uh, twenty-two, for twenty-two Unication five G pagers. Uh, for six hundred seventy-five dollars each for a total of fourteen thousand eight hundred fifty. Um, the other equipment included for an extra fee is programming the new pagers, uh, chargers for the new pagers, and then the, the pager clips. Um, so altogether, including shipping, our total financial, um, contribution would be seventeen thousand one hundred and two dollars out of the fire capital fund. Uh, this was planned for in the mayor long-term capital improvement plan. So, uh, with that, uh, staff is recommending approval of the purchase of the twenty-two five G pagers. Uh, in the amount not to exceed seventeen thousand one hundred two dollars. And with it, uh, I can take any comments or, or questions or, uh, Chief Metzl.
All right, does anyone want to make a motion for the purchase of twenty-two pagers?
Got a question quick. Maggie, you know that the league was advertising in the city bulletin that they was, uh, grant funding for this type of item?
Okay, I am not aware of that.
Okay. Um, so I'm not sure how it, it, it operates, but there, there is a grant specifically for pagers and things like that. I just wondered if we could apply for that?
Um, do you, do you, is it, do you know who, like the, do you have any information on who, like, is?
No, I just saw it on the League of Minnesota Cities, it's.
Um, yeah, if, if that is something that's available, staff can look into that and, and, um, and wait on this purchase.
I mean, I'm all in favor of getting the pagers, but if.
Yeah, and, and we usually try and keep track, like, we try and look for those grants. We were up, looking to apply for one earlier this year, but there's been some setbacks on that grant. Um, but we're always open, because we're, again, we look, but we don't see everything. So if anything ever comes up, just let us know. Um, but, yeah, uh, if that's something we want to do, we can look into it and bring this back at a later date.
Looking at my C. Andy, is that, I mean, if we brought it back later, if we could try to run for a grant? Or is there like a, do we know the lead time of these pagers?
And it takes, I want to say it takes a couple months or so to get them and stuff like that. You know, so I just want to make sure that we have enough time to get them before that, that due date. Um, a lot of times on grants, you know, you, you can apply for something that takes usually months and stuff before you find out anything on it. Um, and, you know, it's going to put it on the, on the line. We did, like you said, we looked at some, tried to apply for a grant, uh, earlier this year. But that fell through, um, we were very fortunate to get, um, Camden Township, um, in donating ten of them for us.
Yeah, I would say, um.
Maybe, can we, if we table that just at the next meeting?
Yeah, I.
So you can do a little bit more research on the grant, and then we can make the decision if that's an even viable option. I mean, can you purchase it and then go for a grant? Or do you have to, like, pay for it with the grant money, like, how does?
Usually you have to wait until you have a contract signed. So, um, but yeah, I, I think that that would make sense to table it until May tenth, until we can get more information on the LMC grant.
All right, is that great? Do you have to make a motion to table it?
Um, no, we'll just, the direction to have us just keep looking into it is fine.
We'll just tables, uh, seven B two, uh, till the next meeting, just to get a little bit further information if there is a grant we can apply for. If not, we'll bring it back to.
Can that apply to seven B three as well then?
Um, I would have to look and see what, what that grant covers as far as.
It's a DNR volunteer fire assistant grant.
Well, the DNR grant, um, it can't apply for, but usually it's maybe about a thousand dollars or something like that. And it's a, um, it's a matching grant. But yeah, it's typically, um, we've applied for that, you know, in, in years past. Every, usually every other, every third year, we'll, we'll get something. And like I said, it, it usually amounts to the amount of one, one to two thousand dollars.
I'm getting redirected now, I'm looking it up. Yeah, one to five thousand, a fifty-fifty.
So is that, with that information, what do you, I guess, I would.
When's the truck come in?
Mayor June, Andy, right?
Middle, middle to end of June.
So should we, could we get the pagers now and apply for the grant for the truck?
Well, the, the, uh, part of the truck radio, you mean?
Yeah.
Depends on.
Maybe that would work?
Yeah, um, I would say, yeah, maybe just, um, yeah, if you want to continue discussing the pager purchase, we can do that.
So we're going to take that backup off the table, back to the table. I'm not quite sure, hold on.
Untable it?
Untabled, I'm untabling the pager purchase, so someone want to make a motion for the purchase of twenty-two pagers.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, we got a first, uh, motion and a second, uh, any further discussion?
Nope, we need them.
Okay, so, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion passes three zero. Okay, so do we want to discuss B three or would we want to just table it?
I might as well just table it until the next meeting.
Okay, so we'll table B three, the radial purchase for the tanker, um, while staff gets further information.
Hold on, how long does that take to get? How long does the radio take to get for the tanker?
Um, I don't have that now.
I also don't want a truck going service without a radio.
We'll have enough information before.
Okay.
Next meeting to know which way we should go.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to table that till the next meeting, uh, further information of possibly applying for a grant. Okay, we're going to move on to seven B four, fire station project change request.
All right, so council in front of you is a change request from BCI Construction for the mayor fire station. Um, the amount being requested is, uh, three thousand six hundred seventy-nine dollars. Um, this is just for some, uh, changes in the storm sewer and plumbing within the project. So the changes were being, were requested as a result of requirements that the state of Minnesota made during their plan review. Um, so, uh, staff is recommending approval, um, to meet those state, uh, state requirements. Um, it would be paid out of the contingency fund. Um, we do have, the city council approved about three percent of the project or eighty thousand. Um, that would, would go for, for a situation such as this, um, for unexpected project changes or needs. So at this time, we do have a balance of sixty-seven thousand three hundred fifty. If we approve the plumbing for three thousand six hundred seventy-nine, we would have six, about sixty-three thousand in that contingency left. Um, so I do continue to keep track of project costs and I will bring back any change orders. Um, I did include total spending amounts at this time, uh, or total amounts that have been approved and spent at this time. Uh, so with that, I'm recommending that the city council approve the change request to meet the changes requested by the state of Minnesota. Uh, in the amount of three thousand six hundred seventy-nine out of the project contingency fund.
All right, does anyone like to make a motion?
I got a question. Maggie, was this, was this our fault or was this the engineer's fault, the architect's fault, the?
I think sometimes it just happens. So they, we did have, um, I think part of it was, we did have our city engineer put together some of the stormwater, um, plans. Uh, and then some of the internal plumbing as well that was constructed by our architect. It, it was just some minor, um, I think some minor, the stormwater was a, a size issue. And then there were just some interior plumbing requirements that the state required as well. So it's, it's, I'm not, I, eh, I, I, again, I, I don't want to put fault on anyone. I think sometimes these, these projects, there are, there's a lot that goes into them, and I think sometimes there can be oversight. Um, so that's, I mean, luckily, um, we're able to correct it before, before the project, like this part of the project moves forward. But I don't, I don't really, I think it's just kind of one of those things that, I don't know if it was an oversight or what. But, um, it's just one of those things that, it's good the state caught it so we can get it right the first time and we can just keep moving forward, I guess. Um.
So has the state looked at everything? I mean, now we're, everything, we, we shouldn't see anything like this again?
Uh, I, I mean, they, everything that the state is required to review, they've reviewed and provided us feedback. Um, they can, again, that doesn't mean that change orders or a change request won't happen along the way. Um, that's essentially, I mean, you hope, again, that the project was designed the way it should be. But, um, things happen and that's why they come back in front of council. And that's why the contingency fund is there to, to kind of create a buffer for situations such as this. Um, so I hope that there won't be anything else, but I can't, I can't guarantee that there won't be anything else.
All right, so let's, uh, anybody like to make a motion for the fire station project change request?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes three zero. All right, we're going to move on to seven C one, sheriff's department summer hours.
All right, so council in front of you is, um, to consider approval of summer hours for the deputy assigned to the city of mayor. So, uh, this came to myself from the sheriff's department. Um, they inquired into summer hours for, for the deputy assigned to us. Um, so as you know, the current patrol hours are Monday through Friday, two to ten. We share, uh, forty hours per week, uh, of one full-time deputy with the city of New Germany. So we have point eight eight, or eighty-eight percent of that contract, and New Germany has twelve percent. Um, so with, the, the schedule change would be, um, between the dates of Memorial Day, May thirty-first, twenty-one, and Labor Day, which is September sixth, twenty-one. Um, and that would include four ten-hour shifts to rotate between Tuesday and Friday one week and Wednesday through Saturday the following week. And the shifts would be twelve P M. to twelve, uh, yeah, twelve P M. to ten P M. So there is some data that's included in your packet. Um, again, we, we, we are on a contract for forty hours. So we, I know in the past, the city council has been trying to kind of figure out the best hours, um, for the deputy. Um, and so, uh, in the past, we've had daytime coverage for a town cop from eight to four. Uh, since twenty twenty, the hours have been changed to our current hours. Um, but summertime tends to be, to have more outdoor activities and community events, especially on the weekends. So, um, the schedule could afford more direct engagement with establishments and residents who are out and about and hosting events on the weekends or in the evenings. Um, there would be no financial change unless we want to, um, we do have the ability to purchase extra hours. Um, that's something we have talked about in the past. Um, and then with this, uh, with the recommendation of approving summer hours, um, it would allow me the opportunity to gather more data. Uh, within the coverage of these hours, um, again, pay, based on past city council discussion. So with that, I'm open for any questions. I do have, um, sheriff deputy here this evening as well, Brad Hendricks, um, to answer any questions. Um.
On the non-coverage days, we'd have somebody coming all the way from wherever they're strolling in Carver County?
Yeah, so we, and, and I think, uh. Yeah, you could, yeah, if you, do you mind stepping up and? Um, we do still have patrol cars that come through on the off days. It's just, I'll actually let you kind of go through that.
So typically, the how it works is when your dedicated deputy, in this case, it would be me, is not where, my day is off or I'm out sick or on vacation, whichever else. Uh, we do have our general patrol cars that cover a bigger district. They're more, we'd be more our direct, my direct backup. They're the ones that would be taking all the calls for service that come in between mayor and New Germany. Um, they do, in their normal pattern, however they drive around their district, um, however they want to, they do come through the cities. You know, so there is that presence that's known. Some people will spend a lot of time in the city, some, some people, they, they come through, make a quick pass multiple times during their shift. You know, so there's still that precedent, it's not that, it's going to be nonexistent. Um, they will be here, it's just, they will, probably won't be in the neighborhoods as much as your dedicated, uh, deputies. Uh, I drive through all the neighborhoods multiple times during my shift. Um, these hours that were, that were presented by our commander, um, I found out, this is the first time I found out about it. Um, so Maggie and I had the opportunity to sit down and talk and discuss and to go over some of the charts if those were included in the packets, I believe. Um, the talking, you know, talking about all those. And it, to us, from what I see, is that towards the later part of the week, that's usually when you're a little bit busier. So I might afford, especially now that the summer hours are coming up, people, more people are going to be on vacations. Uh, now that restrictions have been lifted, a little bit better, there's going to be more opportunity for people to go out and do things. Uh, whether it's going to be home requests or, uh, vacation requests for driving past people's houses, which we get those quite often during the summertime. Um, more of an opportunity for us to be seen, it's a couple hours extra a day. Uh, Sundays, not really much really goes on. Monday is usually pretty quiet, the first part of the week, people are trying to get back into the swing of things after having a weekend off. Tuesday can start to pick up a little bit, but since I've been here, Mondays and Tuesdays have typically been pretty slow. Wednesdays, they can kind of vary, Thursdays and Fridays, things will start to pick up a little bit. So that will give me a couple hours extra per day on the busier ends of the week. Plus, it'll give the city that, uh, dedicated Saturday coverage, um, two Saturdays a month. So every other Saturday, I'll be dedicated here, uh, for any big events that's going on, whether there's something going on at the community center, baseball games, um, other events going on around. It would be every other weekend, it'll, dedicated, I'll be, I'll be in town.
Well, we've had past conversations, um, I'm the only one that was part of those past conversations here.
Yeah, and I can support, I can support that data too.
I mean, our thing was making sure, because, um, we weren't super thrilled with like one day not, like Mondays not having for like paperwork or things that have happened over the weekend. You, are you, the way I understood it was, I felt like that was one complaint, was that, you know, there's a lot of paperwork or things that have happened over the weekend. Do you, are you doing a lot of that on Monday or?
As for me, typically what I do is, whether I do it in my squad car or if I come in at the office, uh, I think for the most part, I'm, I'm usually pop in, I talk with Maggie and, uh, Janelle every single day. Um, sometimes Maggie might have to run out and do something, or Janelle might have to run. Sometimes Maggie might have to run out and do something, or Janelle might have to run out and do something, but I will check with them, just make sure there's nothing that has been brought to their attention that I need to be concerned about. I can't really think of a Monday, or a Tuesday really, that anything big has come up. I think the biggest thing that was brought to my attention was that there was a car that was parked over by the trailhead, um, that, uh, I believe the mayor said it would have been out there for what he thought might, but it might have been for a couple weeks. I don't remember seeing it out there, but the vehicle was gone by the time I got there, so. But when I get in, I usually check to see what happened between mayor and New Germany, you know. From the time that I leave on a Friday night until the time I get back in on a, on a Monday, or in this case, it'd be a Tuesday. If there's anything I need to be concerned about, then I start diving into what that was. If there's anything that I feel that needs to bring, brought to Maggie's attention, I bring it to her attention. So that, like I say, that one day, you know, if it's on a, a Monday or a Tuesday, I mean, if the schedule is, is adopted today, it would be, so this is our first week of our pay period, so it would be, I'd work Tuesday through, um, Friday, and then next week could be Wednesday through Saturday. I believe that's what the proposed schedule was going to be. So, one day I would get two days off, the next I would have four days off in a row. But either way, I always check in with Maggie just to make sure, you know, that there's nothing brought up, um, to her attention. Then I go back and I do my, you know, check through our records, and if there's anything that needs to get brought up to Maggie, then I bring it up to her, and we address any issues that come up.
And you mentioned you were going to use this, because we've talked about, because we always talked about weekend coverage here was a little bit less, um, but we knew that in the summer, so was, is the goal for this is kind of like the first summer to see if this is a good?
Yeah, I think since we, I think it would be an opportunity, um, to gather a little bit more data on these shifts as well. Because I know we've had the day co, like the day coverage, I know we've had the evening coverage, we've never tried this type of coverage. I think, um, it's just, uh, I, yeah, I know in the past, we've kind of had concerns about any, any coverage. We are limited, we only have forty hours that we can dedicate. And so, yeah, I, I think, um, when I was approached by the sheriff's department, I did try and, um, I wanted to understand kind of the, the hours a little bit more, and I know we have talked about them. And it would be, I guess, an opportunity to try them out and, and see if these work in the summer. And, um, especially with, with the hours that we have with, you know, the forty hours that we're limited to. I know, and I know we do, uh, have more events on the weekends in the summer, and we do have more community events that I think I would like to see the sheriff's department more present at, especially Mayor Rising Community Festival or, um, any other. I know it's limited right now with COVID, but, um, but again, it's just, it's one of those ongoing discussions that the council has had over the years, kind of what are the best hours that fit for us, so.
So if we approve this, is there something we could do, say, in two months if we feel like this isn't a fit?
Yes, uh, yeah, so we do have, well, I mean, yes, we do have a contract for forty hours. We are able to be flexible with hours, I think we have to be, um, a little conscientious, conscientious, bleh, can't say that word, of, um, you know, of Deputy Hendrick's schedule. Because I, I don't think changing hours is, you know, you do, you, right.
So I totally understand.
You're here more, you're here longer the days you're here. So instead of two to ten, I mean, you're here twelve to ten.
Right, yep, and like I say, and Megan and I, we discussed the hours, I know, um, Commander Woolley, and he was thinking like a two to midnight. I was a thirteen-year resident of the city, you know, I moved in here in two thousand and five, moved out just over two years ago. But the commander was thinking, like, a lot of our cities have an issues with, uh, juvenile curfew violations. And I'm sitting here thinking all the way back from two thousand and five until two thousand and eighteen, when I left to go out to the country, and I'm like, there's not, mayor or New Ger, mayor and New Germany do not have the juvenile curfew violations and issues like Watertown does. And I know Watertown does, I was a town cop up at it for three years during the day, and then a year working at night. I know Watertown's got curfew issues. Waconia's got curfew issues, Victoria, Chant Hassan, um, Carver sometimes, Norwood Young America, and Cologne, absolutely. But for whatever reason, mayor and New Germany, that is, that it's, I can't say it's a non-issue, but it's a very minor issue. I'm guilty of this too, you know, we'd be out at a neighbor's house when my kids were younger, having a bonfire in the driveway, and my kids and their kids were out running around, but they were always within eyesight and earshot of the parents. So that's not a violation of the curfew ordinance, because the parents are keeping tabs on them. When the parents go in, the kids went in. So I mean, that's just kind of the way it works. So Megan and I, we sat back and looking at some of the data that was there, there's not really a whole lot that goes past ten o'clock. I know when I first moved here, my, my wife joined me, she was upset because at nine o'clock, she goes, let's order a pizza. I looked at the clock and I said, yeah, everything's closed. You know, you'd have to literally drive twenty, thirty minutes just to go, you know, get something. So I mean, this town, even today, at nine o'clock, there is a huge, huge difference between here in Waconia or up in Watertown, or Victoria or Chant Hassan, nine o'clock, lights start going out around here. It gets quiet, you know, which is fine, I love the community, I love the way that that aspect is. You know, and it's very rare that you get a big hot call after ten o'clock, you know, so I mean, it's.
We still have coverage after ten.
Absolutely, you still have coverage, it's just going to be our, our, our general patrol cars or a district car that would be taking the calls. You know, and we just redistrict our, our line, so that the northern district, um, is a little bit bigger, you know, but typically, they're going to be anywhere between Waconia, Watertown, and Mayor. You know, that's typically where they're going to be most prevalent at, for, so response time isn't going to be much. In the rare event they have to go a little bit further out, that we always have other cars that are going to be closer if it's a big call, you know, that they can jump in and take. So the cities are not going to go without coverage, ever. It's just, instead of having five, eight-hour days where I am dedicated to the city, it would be four ten-hour days.
I think it's, I think it's a good thing for us to try, I think this is a good opportunity to, uh, I definitely think that the afternoon switch that we did was beneficial for the city. I think because we are more of a bedroom community, more people were active in the evenings than they were during the days. So, I, I like, I kind of like to give this a try for the summer.
And, and like I said, if it comes over, you know, if, uh, if, if there is an event that's going on for the full weekend, and you want somebody here for the whole weekend, just remember that all I have to do is have Maggie or somebody tell me, it's like, hey, we'd really like you to work Sunday because of this event that's going on. All that's going to do is I'll just adjust the schedule, let my supervisors know, it's like, hey, supposed to work Tuesday through Saturday, but they need me on Sunday, so we're going to work a Wednesday through, like, uh, Wednesday through, um, Sunday. Instead, just, you know, to help accommodate for the city. So as long as it's within that week, you know, we can be flexible with the days, especially if there's something going on. You know, if there's something going on on Monday, I'll work on Monday and maybe not work that Tuesday, you know.
And we can also, too, if, if there are any, if there, if the council, I know we've talked about it in the past, a desire to have another, some additional coverage during different times, we did budget for the ability to do that as well. So we do have, we do have flexibility, we do have options. Yeah, this would, this would be throughout the summer, and then I think before this ends, you know, when we get into the initial budget discussion too, is kind of, I know we bring it up each year, um, the discussion on the best fit for hours. So I think this will give us an opportunity to use this data and kind of compare the three different schedules we've had here, and kind of take that as a good dis, yeah, so.
All right, well, so I'll look for a motion for, uh, summer hours for the sheriff's department.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All right, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes three zero. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, you too. All right, any city council reports, Chad?
Uh, let's see, we had a park board meeting, kind of settled on a general idea for signs to potentially present to the council, uh, the lowest cost, lowest maintenance, but still keeping with the, the rising mayor. It sounds like they'll be made out of a formed aluminum and, uh, a single pedestal. That's what we're looking at, uh, to bring to council at some point. Uh, we also, uh, discussed, uh, design plans for the splash pad, for, um, the Old School House Park up here. And we had, uh, the Mayor Lyons come in and, uh, offer up, I believe it was, was it two thousand a month?
A year.
A year, two thousand a year dedicated to park funds. But a request to rename Old School House Lyons Park.
Yep, so we're looking into what that entails and.
Right.
Yep.
We were suggesting then still keep Old School House Park and then sponsored by Mayor Lyons was the suggestion. That's all I've got.
I don't have any, what, you, Larry?
There was a community ed meeting on April fifteenth, and, um, there was talk about the new playground being installed at the C L C. Everybody's excited to see that happen, insulation should take place the, the first part of May, and it sounds like it should be a destination type of playground. The enrollments are up in the, uh, twenty-one, twenty-two year for, uh, the three and fours, there's still room, three, four, and five-year-olds. They're still looking to hire part-time and full-time people to cover all the offerings, um, performing curriculum review. Classes have steadily increased throughout the year. Things are going very well, youth enrichment sites, um, we've reopened here in Mayor. The staff is looking to get something going on in pickleball here in Mayor, which I'm excited about, because I like pickleball. Defensive driving classes are filling, and, um, they covered like all the construction projects going on over at the high school and all throughout the buildings. But, uh, and they also have sent out, uh, Watertown Mayor community brochure, I'm sure everybody's received that in the mail. Take a look at that and see what they have to offer, but, um, the, their budget remains similar, pretty strong, even though through the COVID and what we had to go through, but, um, that's about it. Actually, it was a, a meeting through Zoom, it was well, uh, attended. I actually had to miss that because of a rescheduled, uh, baseball game for my youngest son, which we froze to death. I feel sorry for these kids out playing in this weather, but that's all I have.
All right, do you have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, we're adjourned.
Thanks, Chief One.